What is it Janice? What Janice?
Good evening. It is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education regular session to order. Tonight, I am excited to welcome Dr. Erica Wakefall, Principal of CJ Hicks Elementary School, home of the Falcons. Please come and introduce our speaker tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oates, Board Members and guests. Again, I am Dr. Erica Wakefall, the proud Principal of CJ Hicks Elementary. And tonight, it is my extreme honor to introduce to you Ms. Essence Spencer. She is one of our fifth grade students and she's accompanied by her parents as well as some of our staff members and she will provide us with tonight's inspiration. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Essence Spencer and I am a fifth grader in Ms. Reyna's DLI class at CJ Hicks Elementary School. Today, I will be reading a poem called Dreams by Langston Hughes. Dreams, hold fast to your dreams for if dreams die, life is a broken winged bird that cannot fly. Hold fast to dreams for if dreams go, life is a bare field frozen with snow. I am inspired by this poem because it talks about not letting go of your dreams because if you let them go, you won't be able to achieve them. Thank you.
Essence, would you come back to the podium and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Still moved Heather.
Second Mandy.
A motion to approve the agenda is presented by Ms. Duncan and second by Mrs. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we welcome the Sims Stallions Community, Siobhan Beckett, Principal of Sims Elementary to provide the school presentation. Come on up Ms. Beckett. One of my favorites.
Alright, good evening everyone. Good evening Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Ms. Duncan, Superintendent Dr. Oates in the Rockdale County Board of Education as well as the Cabinet Members. We are so elated to share with you this evening one of our initiatives at Sims Elementary, which is our Growth Hour. So I have my team with me joining to present. We have my Assistant Principal Dr. Tiana Holmes and one of my academic coaches, Ms. Traon Henderson. And so we'll just be sharing about this initiative that takes place each and every day, every morning. It's our Intervention Enrichment Block. We call it Growth Hour. It's a little under an hour. But we are going to share what it looks like for you guys this evening. Alright, so what is Growth Hour? So Growth Hour is the time of day that is designed for us to provide small group instruction to our scholars. And we make sure that we have small groups. So we have 12 students or fewer in the groups. And we make sure that we use data to drive this instruction. All staff members have a group except about three. So we try to use all hands on deck to make these groups extremely small. And again, the allotted time for each grade level ranges from about 45 to 55 minutes of instruction. We do set forth expectations during that time. So we do have Monday through Wednesday is dedicated to reading instruction. And Monday through Wednesday, we ask that our teachers do guided reading with our scholars. And we do ask that our K through second grade classes focus on decodable texts. And so they really focus on word work and decoding and introducing those phonemic awareness and phonological skills that are needed in the lower grades. And then our third through fifth grade scholars work with guided reading with LLI Kids or Fontis and Penel guided reading resources that we have purchased through our L4GA grant. And on Thursdays and Fridays, it's a math focus. We do use our STAR instructional planning reports for both. But the Monday through Wednesday is primarily focused on, you know, reading and guided reading. But we dive into the instructional planning reports solely for math and that's on Thursday, Fridays. We do have two rotations during that time. We have two 25-minute rotations. One rotation is about eight to eight twenty-five. We have a five-minute transition. And then eight thirty to eight fifty-five is the last rotation. And then at nine o'clock, we begin our master schedule where they go to their instructional blocks. We do monitor this with fidelity. So our admin team, which consists of myself and Dr. Holmes and one of our instructional coaches, we have about six grade levels. So we try to pop into two grade levels apiece so we can see each of our grade levels each and every day to provide feedback. And we use a Jot Form that's electronic that gives the teachers immediate feedback after we visit their classrooms. And our Jot Form has some of the look fours and expectations that we require during this time. And we also hold several PL sessions throughout the year to ensure that they understand our structure, the expectations. And if we're noticing some deficits in the instruction, we do change our content PLC calendar to align to what our teachers need so that we are providing them with the support to give our scholars the best instruction during that time. So how do we form those Growth Hour groups? So of course, our STAR data is the driving force for formulating our groups. We do put them in groups based on their scale scores, especially for math. So of course, beginning, developing proficient and distinguished. And then for K2, they're solely based on STAR, their groups. But in third through fifth, we do do the BAS, which is the Benchmark Assessment from Fontis and Penel. So our third through fifth graders are grouped based on their instructional reading level for reading. But they are grouped for STAR for math. Also during that time, we have Response to Intervention, which is RTI. And we provide that to our third through fifth grade scholars because we don't want any interruptions when they get into those instructional blocks because we are departmentalized or team teaching in third through fifth. So it doesn't provide a lot of time during the school, you know, school day. We don't want them to have to receive those interventions. So we do have RTI interventions in the morning for all third through fifth grade scholars. We have a team of interventionists that have been trained by our RTI Coordinator to provide the scholars with their interventions Monday through Thursday. And Fridays are dedicated to progress monitoring of those interventions. So again, this allows those grade levels to, teachers not to have to fit that in during those instructional blocks during the day. And now Ms. Henderson will come and just share a little bit about our structure for Growth Hour.
Good evening, everyone. What you see before you is what we call the Guide Framework. And we started off using it for reading and for math. And what Guide is, it gives us a structure for the teachers to know what small group activities the scholars could participate in. Even though this, what you're seeing before you is completely filled out, they can choose two of those different blocks to go into. So we have our GAMES and your games can consist of first in math, it can consist of other other activities that will help them with their reading and/or math. The U, which is using what we know, that is strictly standards-based activities. And that's with the teacher for that 20 minutes, the two rotations. Your I is your independent math or reading practice. And that's where the teachers will assign something that's related to the standard that they're focusing on, that the scholars will complete by themselves. The D is developing fluency, reading and math. And we do have a reading fluency specifically for our K2 that the scholars are participating in. And they are doing a five-minute drill. They read through it themselves and then they have their partner to assess them. And then we have our E. Our E is strictly about writing. We have a reading and a math challenge that the scholars can participate in. They use those constructive responses for reading and math. They're performing the performance task, three act test, those activities that are in those groups that the teachers are focusing on that's related to those standards. That's what they can do in that time. And our other instructional coach designed a model for math. It's pretty similar to the Guide. But this gives our math teachers, they can take this same information and pull it into their small group instruction during regular instructional time. And we have the M that's modeling with math. And we're strictly forcing and enforcing and reinforcing the use of manipulatives. Every time the scholars are participating in anything with math, no matter what it is, we expect them to have some manipulatives so they can start to maneuver those things that have a conceptual understanding. The A is at your own, my own, which is the independent. The T is teacher time. And the H is hands-on manipulatives. So they have multiple opportunities to learn how to how to understand those standards-based activities that we're making sure that we're focusing on in those small group instruction. This is not just for Growth Hour, but the teachers can take this information into their regular instructional block to apply those same things. And again, they do not have to do all of those, but the teacher time is required. They have to do that. And then they can do some of the other ones. Then we have our guided reading structure. When we do this, we have a before, during and after. And during that before time, this is where the teachers will teach the vocabulary, give them the strategy, whatever the reading strategy is that they're focusing on. And this is also the time for them to make predictions. Then it moves into the during. So during that time, the scholars are applying what they have learned or what they are discussing during that time to that reading activity. And we have those close reading strategies where the scholar is going to read it multiple times throughout the week. And that way, they'll have a better understanding of the text. And then after reading, this is where they're doing some vocabulary. They're doing the writing. They're applying what they have learned. And during our FMP Kit, we have a script that the teachers follow. Everything is laid out for them. All they have to do is just follow them. It tells you what to do before, what to do after. But we do have vocabulary and we also have the writing. And our Instructional Planner Report, what you see on the left is our lesson plan. And teachers are required to write a lesson plan for their Growth Hour groups. And it's broken up, again, like Ms. Beckett was saying, Monday through Wednesday is reading. And it's focused on if it's K2, those decodable texts. If it's three-five, we're using the Instructional Planner Report and FMP to look at those standards and those skills that the scholars are not understanding or having yet mastered. Some of those standards may not be grade level because we have some scholars that have surpassed it. So they're going to be enriched in their instruction. And on the right, again, the key ideas and the key details and ideas, that's our Instructional Planner Report. And the little hazard symbol or something, the lightning bolt, that is the ones, those are the ones that we really focus on. Even though it shows a lot of standards that the scholars can work on, but we really go in and focus on the ones that really do stand out the most. And that's where our scholars get that extra practice.
I'm going to close us out. So as you've heard, our scholars are grouped based on their level. However, we don't just allow them to stay there during this whole block or during this semester. We don't wait until we reassess at the end to see how our scholars are progressing through the standards and the skills. So we do progress monitoring. And as you've heard, our K through two teachers do focus on phonics and phonemic awareness. So they use sort of a phonics inventory. You can see an example of that on the left from letters. And they give these individually to the scholars to see if they are progressing and attaining and retaining the phonics skills that they are teaching them. We also use STAR customized assessments. And as Ms. Beckett stated earlier, we really like to hone in on our math skills with our STAR, but we can use it for our reading skills as well. So we go in, of course, the teachers already start with the Instructional Planning Guide that Ms. Henderson just referenced. It gives them a list of the skills that their scholars need to work on and it ranks them. We also group them based on their skill set in STAR. So what they do, they're teaching to those skills. They're teaching to those standards. And then they're going into the STAR Renaissance Assessment Program and creating smaller assessments. It can be five questions, 10 questions, just to reassess those skills that they are teaching to ensure that our scholars are getting that information, is driving their instructions. So if they have to make any changes, they can, because again, we don't want to wait to the end to see if our scholars have moved. We want to continue to, you know, check their progress monitor throughout the entire time so that we can move them as needed. Now, they're not moving out of their Growth Hour group, but we are differentiating within that small group so that we can meet our students, our scholars where they are. We use FMP, Fontis and Penel. We give that assessment three times a year. Right now, we've given it twice. We gave it in August and we gave it again in December. And that's how we formulated our three through five reading groups. Well, again, we don't want to wait until we give the assessment in May to determine have our scholars moved, have they made any progress. So we give running records and we give those running records bi-weekly. If our scholars are making progress, if they're meeting what they should be meeting according to the rubric that Fontis and Penel provides, we go ahead and move their guided reading group. We don't want to stagnate their growth. So if they're moving, we don't want to keep them in that same group just because it's easier for us. Even if it's just one scholar, we will move that scholar up to a different level and that scholar will have one-on-one guided reading. So now we're going to look at just a little bit of our FMP data. You guys have access to our STAR data, but as Ms. Beckett mentioned, this we purchased with our L4GA grant funds. And we really use this. It's the individualized test that we administer to our scholars three times a year. And so if you take a look at the data, you will see, and this is just third, fourth and fifth, we had 12 scholars, is it, my eyes are bad. Twenty, 25 scholars that had no growth. So from August to December, those scholars remained on the same level. We had 109 scholars that moved up one grade level. We had 32 scholars that moved up two grade levels. And then we had 18 scholars that moved three or more grade levels. So I think we deserve a hand for the progress that we've made in our third, fourth and fifth. And of course, we definitely look at our STAR data to see how they're going. We triangulate the data to see, you know, what are the similarities and differences between the data? And also see are some of those skills that they're weak in in STAR, are they showing those same areas of weakness in FMP? So we want to make sure that we are looking at everything that we have to ensure that we're meeting our scholars where they are. And now you will see or and hear from the teachers at Sims and you will see some snapshots of Growth Hour at Sims.
I love Growth Hour because scholars get to work with someone other than their classroom teachers many times. And they get a chance to learn things that they might, they might not from their regular classroom teacher. They get a chance.
The best place to start because you get their initial skills to them and especially in math, which is my favorite subject. And when you look at their little faces and they get, I understand, then it's so exciting. So that's why I love Growth.
I love Growth Hour because it allows you to meet students at where they're at, give them that individual attention and work on the skills to help them grow.
Good morning. My name is Ms. Plutch here at Sims Elementary School. I love Growth Hour because we have Growth Hour from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And it's an opportunity to provide interventions and enrichment for our scholars to get them to where they need to be and to push them academically. We have two 25-minute Growth Hour rotations where the first rotation, students will either work independently or in a small group with me and then they'll switch and do the opposite. And we can provide those enrichments or interventions based on focus skills that they, that's why I love Growth.
Alright, so we are continuing to grow at Sims. That is our mission. That is the purpose of Growth Hour. And now, do you guys have any questions for us?
I have a question. You talked about you triangulate the data from the FMP with the STAR data. What are you seeing?
We're seeing similarities. All of our data is pretty much saying the same thing. It's spot on. Even with our CFA, CUAs, our STAR data, our FMP data is giving us the same information about our scholars. There aren't any outliers. Like we have not had any cases where we're saying, well, you know, this scholar is way high in this assessment and way low in this one. The data is pretty, you know, the same, you know, saying, giving us the same information. And we do notice sometimes in some instances because of Growth Hour, maybe a few scholars who, with that small group instruction, because you're providing the instruction at their instructional level, they may be growing, you know, at a faster rate. But based on a scale score, they may be a low achiever, but their SGP, if we look at it that way, we will see that they're making growth in that light versus, you know, their achievement level may, they may still be a beginning or developing learner. But we are seeing growth based on their student growth percentile. And with the STAR being multiple choice and a computer-based assessment, and it's also an adaptive assessment. The teachers, especially in grades third, fourth and fifth, they like to give the FMP assessment because it is administered one-on-one. And they are able to hear the scholars' reading behaviors and make notes of that. But they are seeing some similarities between like the notes that they're taking based on the FMP information and the skills that STAR has highlighted as well.
I have a question. I think this is a great program and I'm sure it's probably making a difference. Is this a new program for this school year or is this something y'all were doing pre-COVID? And have you seen results from prior to doing this? And then when you started it, have you seen results?
Well, we have been implementing this program since I've been at Sims. So I can't really say whether it's been, you know, any improvements because since I've been there, the first year I came, I implemented this because it's a process that I was familiar with from my previous district and how we ran our intervention. So as soon as I came in, Growth Hour took place. And so the teachers didn't really like it at first, so I can't speak to that. That now they see the benefits of it and they enjoy it more than when we first started implementing it. And that buy-in has, you know, come into play and they see the fruits of their labor.
I guess I'm just going to jump in here and start talking. So with that Growth Hour, I guess I want to ask this question of you, Dr. Oates. Do all of the schools have a Growth Hour?
Well, they have a similar process. They build in time to mediate or enrich or to work with students in their deficit areas. And so each school is expected to have something like this. It may not be, they may not call it Growth Hour. But yeah, each school is expected to have it.
You all mentioned several research-based effective instructional practices. You almost had me jumping out of my seat. I heard you talk about monitoring, feedback, which so often goes neglected. I heard you talk about providing support not only to the students, but also to the teachers. And then also coming back and making those adjustments. I want to say great job. But I also want to ask, and I just don't remember this, STAR, does STAR have a feature that kind of forecasts if this child remains on this track, when they take the milestones, this is the level they will fall in?
Yes ma'am. We have a report called State Standards Master Report that we use quite often as well in our PLCs. When we do analyze our data, that's another report that we look at. And it does predict on each standard, you know, where that scholar will be if they were to take the milestone, you know, today or where they're projected to be at the end of the year. It will tell us whether they're going to be, you know, proficient or whether they're going to be beginning or developing. So we do use that quite often.
So you've already looked at that report and you've already determined what percentage per grade level? And that's third through fifth in reading and math, that if they do not pick up the pace, this is where they're going to be. And those students who are right there on the cusp of being at a higher level. Alright.
And we have Saturday School for that, which started on January 4th. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you ladies.
Yeah, I do have one question. I heard you mention running records. So I just want clarification. Would you define that? Because there may be some who don't know what you're referring to, but the practice of actually doing one-on-one, listening to students reading and documenting their behaviors. If you'll describe it. And is that a function of FMP? Okay.
Absolutely. So we do, you know, you can get running records anywhere. But with FMP, because they provide level text, so we assess the scholars to see what level they're on independently and instructionally. The teachers provide instruction on the scholar's instructional level, which is a level above their independent level. When they do running records, those passages are leveled as well. And the scholars have to read the passage. And as the scholars are reading, the teacher is basically annotating and checking off to see how the scholar is reading the text. And then there's a code at the end that will say, you know, if the scholar has three errors, you know, they receive this score. And they have this fluency rate. If the scholar has more than three or five or more, you know, we may need to look back at a different level because this text may be too difficult for this scholar. So it gives us the information in a cold read and a quick way, because they're about two minutes apiece, to provide us information on how our scholars are progressing on those different reading levels.
And in addition to the running records, what this benchmark does, we have a conversation with the scholars, asking them questions about that text. And they, as they're reciting that information, the teacher is writing it down. And that's how we determine their instructional level, along with the running record part of it, which give us our instructional, the number of accuracy. And then we take that information and combine it with the comprehension question. And that together determines if this is their instructional, independent or frustrational level. And that's how we can move our scholars a little bit more.
And we don't go off of one running record. They have to have at least three where they pass before the teacher moves them up. So if they're a level M and they successfully met the criteria three times, showing you that they can successfully read and comprehend at level M, then they're moved up. So it's just not after one running record.
And it's not just fiction. They do get exposure to nonfiction texts as well.
That's right.
Which we know the milestone is heavy on nonfiction. So they are exposed to both genres.
Excellent. Thank you. I enjoyed that presentation.
Thank you all for having us. Thanks.
Thank you.
At this time, we will recognize um our outstanding accomplishments for our scholars and their families. And I would like to ask Dr. Oats and Madam Vice Chair Duncan to join me.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Oats, board members, and all of our guests. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize three of our outstanding students in Rockdale County Public Schools. Each year, Superintendent Dr. Oats sends out hundreds of greeting cards to colleagues and friends during the holiday season. This year, he decided to showcase the artistic talent of one of our students on his personalized cards. After viewing artwork submitted from across the district, he chose one that stood out among the others. Tonight, we would like to recognize the General Ray Davis Middle School student whose artwork touched him and was chosen for the superintendent's greeting cards. If you will please join us up front, Ms. Georgia Zan Bolin. And you can see the greeting card is up on our screen. Take a picture. And parents and friends, you are welcome to come behind me and take a picture as well. But I will put all of our pictures um this evening on our social media as well. But come on up. Mind your way?
No.
Okay. Congratulations. The Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District announced the winners for the 21st Annual Middle School Essay Contest. This year's contest focused on impacts of water quality and quantity in Metro Atlanta, in the Metro Atlanta region in the face of more intense cycles of droughts and floods. Students were asked to write a three-to-500-word essay addressing their choice of two topics. They had the option of researching the last major drought or flooding event in Metro Atlanta and describe how local communities and businesses adapted to the conditions, or describe how more extreme drought and flooding events affect our access to clean, safe water, and how the region can be more resilient, water-resilient in the face of a changing climate. In the 21 years that the Metro Water District has hosted the annual essay contest, this outreach activity has challenged thousands of middle school students to think critically about the conservation and the protection of water resources in our region. This year, more than 600 students from across the 15-county region participated. The annual essay contest is one of many educational outreach initiatives conducted by the Metro Water District to raise awareness about conservation efforts and the importance of water quality preservation in the Atlanta region. Tonight, we recognize a student from Conyers Middle School whose essay titled "Atlanta Water: When It Rains It Pours" was chosen the winner for Rockdale County in this regional essay contest. Please join me in congratulating Miles Fowler. Nope, come this way. Just, there we go. Perfect. Perfect. All right. Congratulations. Dad, did you get a picture?
Yeah, okay.
This one will be in front of this one. Esports officially stands for electronic sports, not to be confused with video games. Esports takes video gaming to another level with organized competitive gameplay between two teams governed by its own strict set of rules and guidelines. Esports requires teamwork, communication, critical and strategic thinking, creativity, sportsmanship, and leadership, much like traditional sports. Esports in high school extends opportunities to students who may never have participated in traditional sports, ultimately diversifying the field of high school athletics. Georgia high schools compete and gained, with game titles such as Madden 23, NBA 2K23, Rocket League, Super Smash Brothers, Splatoon 3, and Mario Kart. Rockdale County High School kicked off its inaugural, inaugural season this fall and quickly became one of the top schools in the state of Georgia. The Madden 23, NBA 2K23, and Super Smash Brothers teams all clinched spots in the playoffs and made significant runs toward the championship. Tonight, we will recognize one member of the NBA 2K23 team who went all the way to the Final Four in the Eastern Region, in which he competed against not only schools from Georgia, but outside of Georgia as well. Unlike traditional sports, esports has a fall and spring season. So there will be another opportunity to bring that top title back to Rockdale County. Please join me in congratulating Carmelo Mortimer. Not, not with us? Okay. Well, we would also like to recognize Coach Elijah Boga for his leadership during this inaugural season of esports at Rockdale County High School. One, two, three. Congratulations on a great season. I think that's.
Okay, we are now in the program agenda where we will take a brief recess to um meet the parents and students and take photos. So a recess for three minutes. Let's to come back in order. Um, the time is now 7:44, and I'm calling this regular meeting back to order. Do we have any visitors today? Ms. Corliss Turner? Turner? As you make your way up to the podium, Ms. Turner, I want to read um our guidelines for speaking tonight. At this time, we come to our next item of business. Allowing our citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide an opportunity for response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, or rude and slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous. Ms. Turner?
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Corliss Turner. I'm the founder of Voices for Rockdale, a citizens group. I want to reference last week's meeting about the stringing and comments. Uh, board member Sandra Lett, Jac- Jackson Lett, she questioned if the um, if there was a capability for people at home that's watching to make public comment, and Cindy said no. Dr. Oats uh said that they wanted to, if they want to participate, they could, would have to come in person. Well, I spoke with the media guy, not guy, but chief, uh tech, Mr. Daly. And so I got some information here. He suggested emailing. So I took upon myself to um Google, how do you um allow comments? He was, uh, Dr. Me, Mr. Daly was concerned about inappropriate language. There is something already in the um YouTube that has um bad words or improper words there, and you can add to it. And that is something that you can do on the, um, in the settings. Also, I see that you all have a Facebook page, and you can uh stream this live on the Facebook platform free. And then also that'll generate 10 times the comments. And I think it's very important to hear from the citizens as well as the parents because we all pay school tax, and a lot of the citizens are senior citizens. And also, last week Cindy expressed the fact of parents coming home and having to cook, they can't come out to the meeting. So this will give them opportune time, you know, uh, opportunity to make comments. And I'm sure that you all um do want to, want to know what the, the citizens as well as the parents have to say. Like, we came up with Cindy Voices for Rockdale, and that's our goal, is to inform the citizens. So Cindy had a uh team's meeting with us. We had, I don't forget how many that was in, in attendance, but it was very informative. So Voices for Rockdale is trying to do as much as it can, you know, to get the word out or, and and who knows, when they start participating or watching and making comments, then maybe they, we, we will bring more people. And and that's what, what our mission is, is to unite the community and uh get the citizens involved. And I think that makes for a strong um community. And as you see, it's all free. And also, you can do it on the Microsoft Team for free, where you can um go to Settings, and there's something already built in there. I don't know if the correct word is it algorithm or what is it called? There's something in there where um it's already, you know, programmed in there, and you can add words. Thank you for your time.
It is now time for the superintendent cabinet's updates. Dr. Oats, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. At this time, our Office of School Performance and Accountability, our assistant superintendents will come forward to provide an overview for us of our first semester STAR data.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, Superintendent, uh, Dr. Oats, board members, cabinet members, and guests. Uh, this evening I bring you greetings on behalf of the Office of Accountability and School Performance. Um, with me I have Doctors McLean and Freeman and Mrs. Hunter. Um, this evening we will provide an overview of the December Administration of STAR with an emphasis on the supports and interventions that our schools have put in place in response to this data. And I can't say enough how excited I was to see the, uh, presentation this evening from, uh, Ms. Beckett and her team. Because when we come and we present and we talk about the plans that our schools have in place, the intervention and enrichment blocks. This is an example that Ms. Beckett provided of her growth hour. Growth hours specifically is in response to the data. And it does have an opportunity for us to enrich our students as well as to provide remediation for our students in response to the data. So I'm very excited that you had an opportunity to hear directly, um, from a school. So as previously shared with you, we use STAR assessments for multiple, uh, purposes. We use it at the beginning of the year as a universal screener. It tells us where our students are currently performing when they begin the school year. Um, it allows us to make a determination as to the interventions and supports that our students will need. Then as we go through the, uh, school year, we reassess again. And this is the progress monitoring. It allows us to see now that we have provided interventions and enrichment as well as providing the actual, uh, skills and curriculum for that particular grade level. Where are our students, um, currently performing? And how are they responding to the interventions that we have provided? And then we also use it for instructional planning. I think Ms. Beckett's team showed an instructional planning report. Teachers use these, they pull this, and they are able to then use them in their lesson plans to support students based on the skills for their particular, uh, grade level and by content. So we offer, uh, STAR early literacy. And on the screen you will see that it is designed for our students in the early literacy phases. And, uh, it's typically, uh, administered for K through two students. But sometimes when we have three through, um, third through fifth grade students and we see that we are doing all of these interventions and supports and they are not working, sometimes we need to be able to figure out what is it? What basic skill, um, that may be hindering a student from making the progress that is needed? And so schools will have the opportunity to administer the STAR EL so that we can break down and find out what specific skill and how should we go about targeting, uh, students? Then we have our STAR reading and STAR math, which is, uh, typically assessed grades one through twelve. And you can see here just the specific skills that are covered with STAR EL, STAR reading, and STAR math. So we're going to start with the data that we, um, looked at in, uh, December. Um, one of the things that we looked at, we wanted to make sure to progress monitor, as I said, we're looking, how have our students grown from the August Administration of STAR to, uh, to the December Administration of STAR? When we looked at STAR early literacy, we were excited to see all of our schools showed the, an increase in the percentage of our students scoring at or above benchmark level in reading. So as Ms. Beckett and her team shared, we're looking for growth. Are we showing growth with our students? We understand that sometimes our students may not be exactly where they need to be, but it is important that we are showing growth so that we can get them there. And in grade one, we had, uh, nine of our schools that showed an increase in the percentage of students scoring at or above the benchmark level. And we had two schools at, um, at, at the first grade who showed a slight decrease in the percentage of students. And one of the things that Dr. McLean and I do is we meet with our principals, we meet with their teams, we look at this data, we talk about what are causal factors? What happened with these grade levels? And then it allows, um, the schools to then design a plan to, uh, support the students and at times support the teachers if we are seeing that the causal factor could be attributed to some deficits or some areas where our, our teachers need some support. Uh, for grade, uh, two with our, uh, STAR, uh, reading. Um, and let me, before we go here, I want to kind of have a, a breakdown for you just so you can understand the achievement, uh, weighted performance as well as the, uh, weighted progress. So performance pretty much just looks at content mastery. It looks at whether or not yours, uh, our students are able to, um, master the skills specific to that content and specific to that grade level. And then, um, progress addresses the questions, how are student, students growing relative to their, um, similar academic peers? So when we look at kids who are performing, um, all in the same, uh, level, how are students, uh, growing relative to those other students? And then at the top, if you can see, um, a breakdown, uh, typically, um, for students who have that one through twenty-nine SGP, those are beginning students. We do not receive credit for a beginning learner. We receive half of a point for a student, um, within the thirty through forty, which is, uh, typical growth. Um, it's still not where we want our students to be. Then we have the forty-one through sixty-five band, which is one point, which is the higher typical growth. And then we have the, um, sixty-six through ninety-nine, which we, um, earned a one point five for our students. And that is called, um, the high growth. So for our grades, uh, two students, again, we were excited to see that a hundred of our elementary schools showed an increase in performance from assessment window one to assessment window two. And this is achievement, so this is content mastery. So what we're saying is all of our schools, when we look at all of our second grade, um, uh, students, we're showing an increase in that performance. Again, we are always fully transparent. Um, our students and our teachers continue to work to get our students up to grade level expectations, but we are seeing movement and we are seeing growth. With SGP's in terms of progress, we had one school in second grade that had high typical growth. And then ten of our schools performed in that sixty-six to ninety-nine, where you see that growth. For grades three through five, we also had a hundred percent of our elementary schools to show an increase in performance. Again, we, we, um, when we look at grades three through five, we band them together because that's typically how we, um, look at our Georgia milestones, that's how we look at our CCRPI data. But we also extract that data and we look at third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade by itself to make sure that we can have a clear understanding if we have any deficits in our, in our schools. And so we had, when we looked at that data at the third, fourth grade, all of our schools increased in achievement. At fifth grade, we had, um, ten of our schools to show an increase and we had one school to show a slight decrease. We had one hundred percent of our elementary schools to show high progress. Okay. Um, one of the things that I also wanted to point out is that, um, Dr. McLean, I know she will speak to it, but one of the things that is so important for us and was very important for us this time, um, of year is to make sure that our schools came back with a solid plan for intervention. And so our schools have this data, they had this data before the break, they analyzed this data before the break, and they responded to this data and were prepared on day one in semester two to begin interventions and supports for our students. Okay. This time I'd like to turn it over to Dr. McLean.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, and good evening, everyone. I will share the STAR math data with you. Um, this data is administered to students beginning in first grade. And if you look at the chart here, you will see in first grade, one hundred percent of our schools showed an increase in achievement from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. When we look at growth, eighteen percent, which is two schools, show high typical growth, while nine of the schools show high growth. For second grade, a hundred percent of the schools show increase in achievement for growth. One school showed low typical growth, while two of the schools show high typical growth. And the other eight schools, and there's a typo there, showed high growth. Looking at grades three through five, ninety-one percent of the students showed an increase in achievement from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year for grades three through five combined. But when we look at the data for each grade, we did notice a decline in performance for, um, one school for three through five. When we look at the data for each grade level, we noticed that two schools saw a decline at fourth grade and one school saw a decline at fifth grade. The SGP, nine percent, one school showed high typical growth and ninety-one percent, ten of our schools showed high growth. Now that we've shared the data, you may be wondering, so you have the data, now what? So on this slide, you will see our second semester intervention plan and timeline. As Dr. Campbell mentioned, all of our elementary schools administered, they analyzed, and they created intervention and enrichment plans in response to the data in December before they left for the break. When the, they submitted those plans to us, when we returned back in January, that very first week, all of our schools met to have data conversations with our curriculum and instruction personnel to identify the resources, to talk about supports, and to talk about instructional strategies in response to the data. So it wasn't just the principal, it was their administrative team. So really looking at all the data, what extra support? Um, do we need any extra suggestions that our curriculum department can provide? So in January, because they had those intervention plans in place, when our students returned, they were ready to begin working with those intervention and enrichment groups to target. We wanted to reduce our students who are performing at levels one and two. And we want to increase those students who are performing at levels three and four. Um, as you know, we do have an after-school program for our second through third grade students. And so those, for after-school, they're in the process now of looking at that mid-year, um, I-ready data. So they're assessing those students to see how they're doing in extended learning. And what we will do, because we have the plans, we don't want to wait until May to see what adjustments need to be made. Our schools will re-administer the STAR for grades, students in grades three through five late February to see what adjustments need to be made. To start off, once again, that STAR data was developed, available to our school prior to the break. Dr. Campbell and I charge each principal and their teams with analyzing that data and creating those daily small groups for instruction. Those groups are to be flexible based on students' needs. You heard Ms. Beckett and her team do a really good job of talking about the reports that are available in STAR. So all of our schools, they know how to access those reports so that teachers can provide targeted instruction. So throughout the school day, during our intervention and enrichment block, which at SEMS they refer to as growth hours, small groups occur. Teachers are able to reteach any skills of concern and they're able to enrich, enrich those students who've already mastered the skills. Schools also have safety net funds and they're able to use those funds to provide additional support to students. So once again, principals and their team, they really dig down, look at the data by subgroups. And so they're able to determine what extra support do we need for different subgroups, different population of students? Some of our schools are using their safety nets to offer Saturday school, enrichment, and intervention camps, winter break, intersection support, virtual and in-person after-school enrichment and intervention support. And some have even hired some tutors to be able to go in to work with students one-on-one. Want to note that these different safety net programs do address, we have programs especially for gifted students. If that, that team feels like, okay, we need to do some other things to enrich our gifted students. At some of the schools, it may be their EL population that they, that needs extra support. So they're able to target different students at different levels. So just wanted to point out that those extra supports are not just for students who are behind. All, all of our elementary schools are using I-Ready doing the extended learning program. And so when we met with our schools in January, we did not have the middle-of-the-year I-Ready data. So we have asked schools, we asked them to share, looking at your STAR data, share with us how your students who are in the extended learning program, how they're doing. So I'm pleased to report that in meeting with principals, we are seeing that those students who are participating in, um, the extended learning, they're making progress. Once again, they may not be proficient and on grade level, but we can see that they are growing within each band. We want to make sure that we have the data, we share the data with our parents, but also we want to make sure that students are accountable for their own learning. So it's really important for us to share data with students. So teachers have the opportunities to share the data, have conferences with students to let them know how they perform to help them set goals as well. Um, it was mentioned, I think, Ms. Beckett talked about guided reading. And so teachers are receiving guided reading training so that they can know how to really identify student level of reading and how to intervene. They also are receiving PLs with, on the use of manipulatives. We want to make sure that they understand the math and they know how to do it. Lastly, principals are providing supports to teachers with low growth while deliberately using their PLCs to increase teacher knowledge. So in PLCs, you will see, um, sometimes district coaches coming in. If principals notice that, oh, a particular grade level is struggling, some of our district coaches will come in and support teachers. Um, I was at a school today and principals are also setting aside funds for, um, teachers to have half-day or whole-day planning to really have that opportunity to really dig into data. And I was really excited to see, not only were they looking at their STAR data, um, today at that school, when they were looking at their STAR data, they were pulling up those instructional planning reports to identify the skill. They were having conversations, um, when they looked at that state mastery report and they're trying to predict what would the student be at the end of the year. And they also had an opportunity to look at their CUA data and they can compare how they're doing in relationship to the district. And really looking at what reports can we pull to make sure that when we're pulling our students in small group, we're actually targeting this, um, skills that they need extra support on? So those are the things that we are doing and we will continue to do for semester two just to support our students and to make sure that we are seeing the growth. It is our goal, um, for our students to, um, be grade level, be career-ready. Um, and so we will continue to work, uh, with our students and with our teachers, um, to make sure that we are seeing students moving to that proficient level and above. At this time, I want to turn it over to Ms. Hunter to discuss information for middle school.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be beginning with our STAR reading data in the area of reading. In sixth grade, seventy-five percent of our schools increased their weighted achievement. Twenty-five percent, which is one school, decreased. Fifty percent of our schools increased the percentage of students in levels two through four, and fifty percent, two schools decreased. All of our schools had high typical growth. We have identified seventh grade in the area of reading to be an area of focus across at least three of my schools and fourth one is, is still monitoring. So with that being said, we did find that twenty-five percent of our schools increased their weighted achievement. And we did have three that decreased in weighted achievement for seventh grade. Fifty percent of our students, schools increased percentage of students in levels two through four, and fifty percent, which was two, decreased. Seventy-five percent of our schools had high typical growth. And I did have one school that was slightly below the high typical, which did put them in low typical growth. In eighth grade, seventy-five percent of our schools increased their weighted achievement. One school remained the same. Seventy-five percent of our schools increased the percentage of students in levels two through four, and one school decreased. And all one hundred percent of our schools decreased, excuse me, showed high typical growth in the area of reading in eighth grade. Our next slide will focus in the area of math. All of our middle schools increased their weighted achievement in sixth grade. All of our schools in sixth grade from middle school increased this amount of students in levels two through four, and all of them had high typical growth in sixth grade. In seventh grade, seventy-five percent of our schools increased the weighted achievement. In seventh grade, 75% of our schools increased the weighted achievement. One did remain the same. We had 50% of our schools increased the percentage of students in levels two through four, and two schools decreased. All the schools demonstrated high typical growth in seventh grade. In eighth grade, 100% of our schools increased their weighted achievement. 100% of our schools increased those students in levels two through four, and 100% of our students demonstrated high typical growth in eighth grade. Our next slide explains our middle school intervention block that is at all of our middle schools. It's during the first period time. And during this time, teachers focus on remediation, enrichment, previewing of content, and opportunities to extend writing. During this time, personalized support plans based upon data from STAR, formative assessments, IXL, and Freckle assessments are used. IXL and Freckle are instructional tools that assess student performance and provide support based upon each student's individual need. Students also have an opportunity to work above grade level for extension opportunities with these programs. All schools create lesson plans that reflect additional instructional support and the lowest standards identified. Areas are identified during the teacher's collaborative planning with their academic coach as well as the assistant principal for that content area. All middle schools provide reading and math intervention during first period. Small group instruction is integrated into the intervention block as well. Analysis of ThinkCIRCA, which is our writing platform data, is used to inform PLCs, which is our professional learning communities, of student strengths and weaknesses. Additional instruction is integrated into weekly lessons to address areas of need. Math and literacy coaches, which all of our schools have, also meet to collaboratively identify strategies to improve student performance. As far as our ELL, ELA supports and interventions, they include: All schools have literacy coaches for modeling the most effective strategies and providing PL, professional learning for teachers. Based upon STAR administration two, small groups will be pulled and will receive additional ELA support weekly based on this most current data. Schools have increased opportunities for students to engage with text through science-sustained reading. Accountability talks and goal-setting with STAR takes place after every STAR administration at all schools. There is consistent collaboration with curriculum and instruction on most effective instructional resources and methods. We make sure there's deconstruction of standards, make sure our instructions align to the rigor of the standards and the content of the standards. Reading support classes are at all middle schools. For those students who are significantly behind in their reading performance, those are fluid classes. So first semester, the data was reviewed to make sure if they needed system 44 or read 180, and they removed or removed kids out of their class who met the threshold. We have use of extended learning for personalized remediation or extension, flexible grouping of students based upon areas of need for extended learning. We have after-school tutorials, Saturday School, and virtual school tutoring. And student performance data is analyzed in form of interventions. And as I stated before, we have recognized that seventh grade is an area of focus for us. Our next slide speaks to math interventions. We have met with curriculum instruction to increase the use of tasks and manipulatives in class. All schools have math coaches for modeling of best practices for teachers, coaching, providing feedback, and performing school-wide professional learning. Based upon STAR administration number two, small groups will be pulled and will receive additional math support weekly. This is in addition to the intervention block that has been rescheduled already since day one of second semester to meet the needs of our students. So on top of that, we also are doing small groups of students. Collaboration with curriculum and instruction on most effective resources and instructional methods. Horizontal PLC teams with all other middle schools. We have the same schedule, so it doesn't allow for a grade-level content teachers to collaborate via teams. SPAR reviews, which is reviewing past content during their opening of classes. Extension for those students who are approaching the next level of performance. So we don't just recognize those students who are on level one, but one to two, two to three, then three to four. And also our gifted students, making sure that we are extending them. Math connection classes focused on prerequisite skills for current standards. Use of extended learning for personalized remediation and/or extension. Flexible grouping again, and we all have Saturday School, after-school, and virtual tutoring. I would also like to share that parents have access to their students' STAR performance through the parent portal, also through Infinite Campus, the same link that is used to take the RINAS STAR assessment. Students can go in there to get their STAR results. Although all schools are sharing with every student with goal-setting, but it's for parents in case it doesn't make it home sometimes. And then the STAR link is also on the webpage for all middle schools. That will conclude our middle school data.
Good evening. I'll be presenting the high school data this evening. We'll start with the STAR high school reading data. And we will start with ninth grade. As we look at ninth grade, you may note that 100% or three of our high schools decreased in this level. So that lets us know we really have urgent work to do in this area. We'll move forward to 10th grade achievement. Two of our high schools increased in performance for high school reading, and one of our high schools decreased in performance. 11th grade is our assessed area. Every student taking American Lit in 11th grade will take the end-of-course test. We note here that we have performance of one high school increased, one high school remained steady, and one high school decreased. When we move to our seniors, we see that one high school increased and two high schools decreased. Now, as we take a look at our student growth percentile, you might ask, how does achievement decrease? But SGP shows growth. Student achievement is based on a student's mastery of an expected level of performance. Student growth, SGP, which is student growth, is based on if students are reaching the level of mastery at the start. Let me change that. Student growth percentile is based on solely student growth. They are compared, as my colleagues shared, with their academic peers, and it is developed over time. So SGP is based on their current score plus up to two past scores. So you may have a student that is showing high growth, but they performed at such a low level towards mastery. They grew, but they didn't grow enough to become proficient. And so when we look at the SGP's, we see that three high schools showed high typical growth. When we look at in ninth grade, in 10th grade, we see that two high schools showed high growth and one high school showed typical growth. In 11th grade, again, which is our assessed grade for American literature, we see that 100% of our high schools showed high growth. And our seniors, one high school showed high growth, and one high school, uh, two high schools showed, uh, two high schools showed high typical growth. When we move to math, we take a look again, we begin with achievement. And this time, our assessed grade is ninth grade. And when we look at ninth grade, when we look at ninth grade, we see that that is actually coordinate algebra for our students. We see that one high school increased in performance from window one to window two, and two high schools decreased. In 10th grade, we again see that one high school increased, one high school remained steady, and one high school decreased. When we move to 11th grade math, we see that two high schools increased and one high school decreased in performance. And for our seniors, 100% of high schools increased, which would be three. For our student growth percentile, for ninth graders, we see that three high schools showed high typical growth. When we move to 10th grade, we see that one high school showed high growth and two high schools showed high typical growth. When we move forward to 11th grade, we see that one high school showed high growth and two high schools showed high typical growth. And when we move to our seniors, we see that one high school showed high growth, one showed high typical growth, and one did show low typical growth. So what is our system, knowing that data, for improving academic achievement and also promoting continuous growth for all students? We begin with ensuring first that we have rigorous and engaging tier-one instruction. Then we ensure that we triangulate and analyze the data. We dig deep into finding the root calls, the why, that informs our what's next. We look at and determine the levels of support needed and develop the plan for continuous improvement, and we focus on fidelity. So moving forward and looking at each of those steps and elements as they are, we first look at tier-one instruction. Are we leveraging 90 minutes with students across all classrooms and all schools well? Are we having bell-to-bell instruction for our students? This is our first priority. It is the primary level of instruction. And if that primary level has significant gaps, then no intervention will be effective. So in order to ensure that we are effective, we have differentiated support for our faculty and staff. We have teachers at different levels of expertise, and so it's important that we don't treat them all the same. We give them what they need. So teachers who are at the highest level of expertise, we want them to continue to grow. And our induction-level teachers, who may need more support, we want to make sure we give that to them as well. And we do that through targeted PL on lesson planning, instructional strategies, modeling, and other elements. We also have a common instructional framework that we think encourages student engagement and offers more structure in the classroom. We call it the gradual release model. Now, we still use the opening, the work period, and the closing. This is simply a layering on. And so when we look at the four parts, we look first at the "I do it", which is where that is teacher-focused, the teacher is explaining. We then move to the "we do it together", which is more aligned with guided instruction. And then we look at "you do it together", which is aligned to collaboration. And then the final phase for us is "you do it alone". Every teacher does not have to follow this structure just as it's listed. It depends on the lesson and where students are. Then we move to warm-ups. We have warm-ups required across all of our high schools and programs. The warm-ups serve as a transition from hallway to the focus of the classroom. These warm-ups engage, they might spiral content that the teacher has noticed students have not grasped yet. And they also may be test-taking strategies. So we take the mystery out of testing by helping our students understand what strategies might be helpful on testing. We then move to all high schools. The expectation is that students understand what they are going to learn through the standards. And we look at the learning targets. What's the goal for the day of learning? And then success criteria, how will the students know when they've got it? And that's really important as we look at students and what we want them to achieve. Next, in our steps, we have triangulation and analyzing the data. We have lots of data sources at the high school level and I think throughout our system, but it's important to take those data systems in context and understand how they relate to one another. We did add an assessment this year, last, this semester, that Teaching and Learning actually developed for us called the MACH EOC. They developed it in the four assessed areas, which was very helpful to us. All of our high schools completed this on January the 13th, and so they're still disaggregating the data for us. But it allows us to have a cumulative look from August to now of what our students learned and retained. We'll take that data and look at it and actually look at the standards and the trends in the standards as a whole, and look at individual students and design our interventions in order to match that. Our PLCs take this data and really break it down. We use a common agenda and a common data protocol as they collaborate for their instructional planning. We also complete a root calls analysis. It's really important to understand why a student might not be performing at the expected levels. And so we want to match the intervention to the issue so that we really are treating the problem that the student might be having in learning and not just what we guessed was the problem. When we look at underlying items that might affect performance, we look at why are some students successful and others not? One of the elements that we believe is important is student efficacy. Does the student believe in him or herself and their ability to achieve? And then we look at student agency. Does the student feel like they can advocate for themselves successfully? And so they are taking charge of their learning. Those students usually have multiple opportunities to succeed, and they take them. And sometimes they have parents who are very highly engaged. Then when we look at students who may struggle, we look at why. Is it unsealed gaps that happened over time? And then they don't have the student efficacy? They don't believe they can achieve? Is it problems with attendance, behavior, personal challenges, and student effort? And we have to address these underlying causes of achievement that may have nothing to do with what's happening in the classroom. So where do we go from here? We determine the level of support each student needs and develop a plan for continuous improvement. So we do have extended learning. And those of you who have been on the board for a while may remember me talking about some of these with our tutorials, which we have a variety of. We have tutor.com for our virtual support any time of the day. We still have credit recovery, SAT and ACT prep, study sessions for AP students. But this year, we would also like to have check-ins with our dual enrollment students. Sometimes we lose those students because, of course, the college tells them upfront, you are going to be treated as an adult. And so we don't get a tremendous amount of information about their grades, but we can have a voluntary check-in so that we can offer some support to those students should they need it. We are also considering a zero period at the high school level in some cases where students are so far behind that they need additional time, a lot of additional instructional time to catch up. And so we are looking at the feasibility of doing that zero period. When we look specifically at improving literacy, we are looking at, oh, one more thing in that area. Last year, I spoke with you all about upward bound, and many of you were very excited about that. We did receive the grant, and we will begin planning for that this semester. I still don't have heritage. The grant did not cover them, but the gentleman shared with me that he may have something else that will work for them. So we'll be working on that very closely. Now to improving literacy or reading. We know the more students read, the better they become at it. So we are looking at high-interest reading based on Lexile levels. So the way some schools implement that is they have media specialists actually pull hard copy books and place them by Lexile level, and students can pick the books that they would like. We also have electronic versions of that with News ELA and other programs that schools individually select. Our schools, some of our schools were able to afford literacy coaches this year and last year, and they continue to have those. I did not mean to skip content-specific literacy, which is something that our coordinators and coaches are helping us with, which is where we teach vocabulary words intentionally and specifically based on a specific content area or subject area, like teaching photosynthesis to students because it's used in science in that area. This year, Teaching and Learning paid for high school nine through 11 to have ThinkCIRCA, which really helps improve literacy with data analysis and also really improves writing. We're still working with that, and we actually have a training with our high schools coming up next week where ThinkCIRCA will come out and continue their training. When we look at improving math, we do have support classes in math for all coordinate algebra subjects. Students are selected on this based on their scores and improvement that is needed. So that's in addition to the 90 minutes of coordinate algebra that they have. They also have the math support class. We have math specialists, which Teaching and Learning has provided as well, who pull students and also push into classrooms for immediate help and support. Again, we have the content-specific literacy. And we have pre- and post-tests that really give us a chance to look at student And we have pre and post tests that really give us a chance to look at student proficiency based on mastery. As we move forward, we see something that's very important. When we think about those things that I've talked about in the past and we think about why those things may not have merited what the performance that we would want. I think, and as we reflected on it as a team, it is fidelity of implementation. That is execution of the plan. And that's something that we are really going to focus on and have been focusing on this year. So has the plan been communicated and communicated clearly? And is everyone on the same page? Being on the same page means everyone is doing what was asked and collaboratively decided. We also want to ensure that our targeted tutorials, those are tutorials that are specific for targeted to students, not the drop in where you might just have a question for the day. But the targeted tutorials really do have a curriculum. So what are we doing? What is the plan every day for those students? And so also, we want to monitor our students at closer intervals. So we're not just waiting for a reporting period before we check in on our interventions. In addition, we want to observe those tutorials in action. In high school, oftentimes, oftentimes after school, we have games that we're going to. We have performances that we're going to. But how often do our students in after school tutorials or Saturday school really see our administrators and us engaging with them and encouraging them as well? We want to remove any barriers that students have. So if budgets allow, we definitely have transportation for our students for Saturday school and after school. In addition, we are looking at healthy snacks. We've begun that conversation. We know that some students' diets may entirely be going to a vending machine and getting hot Cheetos and honey buns, which we all like, but we can't survive on that. And you certainly aren't your best at the end of the day if that's what you've consumed when you have healthy alternatives. Now, we do know that high school students are going to make their own choices. And so we're working with Mr. Allen to have taste testings for students and help them get healthier snacks or choose healthier snacks. So that is ongoing. Also, we want to develop strategies that encourage students to attend and be on time because they cannot get it if they're not in the classroom. We want to make sure that we have learning environments that are engaging where students feel valued so they actually want to come to school. We also know how important it is to engage our parents and to also ensure that our parents feel comfortable coming into our schools. We do this through communication. And Dr. Oats, the first time I heard him say it, it kind of perked up my ear. Overcommunication is better than undercommunication. And so we need to communicate via all the methods that we have and encourage parents to know what's happening in our schools. We also are taking a strong look at grade books. It's really important that students have real, parents have real time data and students have real time data about how they're performing. And so we want to make sure that we do that. No grade dumping is, is what we'd like to do. Also, let's try conferences. Emails are great, but we know conferences, it's more engaging and parents can actually engage with us and ask questions. And you understand the tone and the intent from that. Those can happen virtually or in person. And then Parents Night, where we're informing our parents about how to read the data, how to find where the data is, and all of those elements. My last slide is our instructional plan. And you've heard a lot of it this evening. We, at high school, used every bit of that STAR window. So we were not finished with STAR until the very last day, which was the last day of school before Christmas break, before our holiday break. And so we started disaggregating that data when we came back to school. And we are developing plans and have many plans already developed for moving students who are on the bubble to the next area. For levels three and four, focused on enrichment mainly, and for levels one and two, of course, remediating their skills. As I've shared, we did administer the MACH EOC, which will be very helpful. We have started targeted remediation and enrichment. We are also focused on PL with our partners in Teaching and Learning, differentiated by school and by department, what is needed. And we are going to give an additional STAR in March of 2023 so we can see where, where we are. Thank you. I appreciate it. I hope I didn't go over my time. And if there are any questions, we're happy to take them.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm assuming on all of y'all's charts, from what Dr. Campbell presented, like window one was August, I think. And then window two was December. So that like the beginning of your middle school charts, that top section still was from window one to window two? Okay. And so just for me to understand, on the achievement, the average weighted performance, has the achievement bar gone up, excuse me, from window one to window two?
Yes, ma'am. Something with their assessment adjust actually throughout the year. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not the same, it's not the same exam being given. It's more of an expectation for them mid-year to know more. Yes, ma'am.
That makes me feel a little better.
But we still want to go up no matter what.
Yes, I totally agree. But I just want to make sure they're not, okay.
I have a question. You may mention that you offer study sessions for AP courses. So what does that look like? Is that like during Saturday school, after school? Is it for the individual student, is it group, you know? How will an AP student know that there is a study session?
Absolutely. So each teacher lets their students know when the study sessions are. And they try to work so that students, if most of their students can come on Saturday, they may do those sessions on Saturdays. They may choose to do those sessions during the work week or during the, the week when students are there, if that best fits the students' needs. They may choose to do them in certain, at certain times because as, as you know, AP has such a workload with those students. So they may choose to do them like four weeks before the exam. And that's the way they generally work it. But it is by teacher and they do decide that based on what the students' needs are.
Okay. One more question.
Absolutely.
You may, on the data, it stated that our ninth graders, and this, I'm talking about the math. And we all know that coordinate algebra is challenging.
Yes.
So we know that. Is there a study session specifically for that? I know everyone has implemented, implemented the Saturday school.
Right.
But are we having study sessions as well? Because you know, with math, the more you do it, the more.
Better. So one of our, we do have tutorials for coordinate algebra. One of our best, I think our best efforts is using the 90 minutes for the math support class for those students who are in the lowest quartile for math. And so they have a double dose of math. Now, I believe we had these, I know we had these in the past, but I think it's the fidelity of how we treat the class. That is having a defined, more defined curriculum and also having more regular checks with students and ramping it up when we see that students are not getting it. Coordinate algebra, math is sometimes difficult for more people than English, even though in English, we decreased on STAR in all levels. But when we look at end of course TATA, we see dismal results in coordinate algebra. In particular, our schools are aware and they are adjusting to make sure students get the skills and the content they need to be able to access the standard at the right level.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
How often is STAR administered?
This year, three times. Last year, we administered it four times. But we can administer it as often as we'd like. I think I've been told that you need to administer it at least six weeks. You need to give it at least six weeks, I think. Oh, at least 30 days.
Yeah, you, you can take STAR at least every four weeks. And what that does is if you have students who are struggling, you're not waiting for that six weeks. And that's key in progress monitoring. So that would be a suggestion for me. If we have students or schools that are struggling, then let's administer STAR a little bit more frequently. That would assist in you catching those students before that, those extra two weeks have followed.
And I'm sorry, I failed to mention, Teaching and Learning has let us know that as part of the RTI process, for those students who are in need of more intensive instruction, we can schedule it at those windows. But we can, I hear you, when you say maybe for other students who are not in the RTI process.
Yes, those students who are performing not on grade level or even those students you want to advance, those students that are right their neck cuffs, let them take STAR more frequently. It's going to provide you a valuable data, data. And I actually have another question. One of the things that you mentioned was that you're ensuring that you, let me see. Something about ensuring that those parents were aware of the grade with, in conjunction of being able to utilize Infinite Campus?
Yes.
Okay, so one of the things that I know is concerning to, for a lot of parents is that when they go to Infinite Campus, the grades are not there. So what is that plan?
Absolutely. So we have common commitments at high school where teachers, we've shared with all the teachers and it's consistently across high school that gives a minimum threshold of grades. And teachers are expected to put those grades in at regular intervals. So when we find what I call grade dumping, we have to address it because the expectation is there. And that's what I mean when I say the fidelity of implementation.
Question about grade, grade dumping. I had a few parents that were concerned about that. So what happens, okay, when we find that there is a grade dumping and it's too late for the student or the parent to address? Are we beginning to see some of that? And how are we addressing that kind of concern?
When that is brought to our attention, we don't punish the student for that. The student is giving allowance, given allowance to complete assignments. So they do show mastery, so you're not just giving them a grade. But without the parent as a partner, they can't make sure that the child is doing it if they don't know until the day before the progress report comes out that the kid has missed assignments. And so we do make those allowances. And I would recommend any parent to call the school, contact the teacher first, then move to the assistant principal, and then the principal, it should be resolved there. But if not, I'm always your next step.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yes.
I, I think, I think one of the things that we're not, we're overlooking in grade dumping is the fact that it's the, we're holding the students responsible in a way, even if we're making it up. But how are we holding the teacher who's doing it?
Absolutely.
That's because in essence, that there lies the problem. So even if you now go back and say, we have now created a way for you to bring your grade up, that's not sufficient because we have to stop the bad behavior.
Absolutely.
Instead of trying to fix it on the back end. So what processes do we have in place that's addressing the teachers who are doing grade dumping? We've all been there as parents.
Absolutely. That's how it, that's how it came to our attention. And that would be dealt with in the form of personnel issue. And it might be dealt with through a letter of concern, a letter of directive. And it also could be reflected on their TEACs, annual observation, or their summative as well. How we try to prevent that is assistant principals go into grade books and look at not only how many grades are there, but what category the grade is in so that we have balanced grade books as well. And so when we do find the occasion, and I've not found it often, but I have found it, we do address it because it cannot continue.
So is there a way for students to report it? Or parents to report it? If you're in, if you're now finding out that teachers are grade dumping and of course, the kids will go back and say, my teacher just did this. But what about when it happens in real time? Is there a way for us to implement? I know we don't have it right now, but it's a way for students to, in real time, report that their teachers are not putting in their grades and they need to know what's going on ahead of time.
Absolutely. The student is right there at the school where we do have the assistant principal that they could go to immediately and talk with them about it. We do not have an electronic system for reporting that. But I would recommend that students avail themselves of the personnel directly in the building. And that's part of student agency and advocacy for themselves. And then just follow the process all the way through. I know Dr. Oats has received letters before from students, not about grade dumping, but about other things. And we definitely address that immediately as he shares those with me.
And you know, I, I would say there's a role for all stakeholders in this to try to rein in and make sure that the problem of grade dumping or not keeping up with grade reporting before that becomes a real issue. And so I'm one of, and I know that it's not every parent. There are a lot of different reasons, but I'm one of those parents who check Infinite Campus incessantly. I mean, I'm kind of addicted to it because it's so chock full of information. And so I was doing that last night as I was going into my children's room. Say, okay, now where's that video notes assignment? I see it showing, showing it's missing. So if my parents constantly checking that and, and, and making sure that the student understands that if there is an issue with grade reporting or grade dumping, that they go to the assistant principal or the principal and report that, that's very helpful as well. And I know that, as I said, we've talked about that, but that issue is being addressed. And I can tell you, as a former principal, at every level, it has to be at the school level that the issues, whether it's not turning in grade in lesson plans, not being, you know, we had guidelines, I had guidelines for, you know, there should not, the grades should be updated every so often. And I'd indicate that interval, they should be updated within that period of time. Because teachers have to have time to grade compositions and the like. But you, it, it is so critical that there is the accountability at the school level, at the principal or assistant principal level, who's the administrative record for a particular department of teachers to make sure there's constant inspection of what you expect. That, that's what works really well. I've lived that, that works. Point I'm making is that the principals at each of our schools have to have the expectation of their teachers and not only have the expectation, but monitor the expectations of what are the guidelines for reporting grades? What are the guidelines for sharing that information with students? That has to happen at the school level. So that is my point. And I know that our assistant superintendents are driving that home to our principals. That's critically important. And then the principals to the assistant principals, right?
High schools, we have common commitments where all of that is listed, that all high schools agree to.
Exactly.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
At high schools, we have the common commitments that all our high schools agree to, and that is part of those common commitments.
If you have a teacher that turns in 30 assignments next month to 10, it's not really fair to the students if by, it should be a lottery of who's your teacher. So we actually worked with Teaching and Learning this summer with the principals to look at what was effective in monitoring student achievement and mastery? And what was feasible? Because you want to make sure that they are really rigorous assessments as well as aligned and not complying with things. That's a big thing to be not doing because you signed something you didn't write. That's not really telling me you're mad at the content. We did work with our principals this summer to make sure we were comfortable with that.
And we did the same thing for elementary as well because we did take a post checkups our elementary schools to see where our schools were in terms of grading and reporting. And we saw that we just had quite a few discrepancies and differences occurring. It was so very important for us to be able to do that because as we do have students that may leave one school and go to the other, it's important that there are some consistent practices. However, schools do have some flexibility to have some differentiated approaches. But what we have asked our principals to do, starting at the beginning of this school year, they had to reintroduce the expectations across all elementary schools for teachers. And so now we find principals are using things such as the missing grades reports and Infinite Campus. They pull those to be able to look and see, okay, this is what we should be seeing. This is what we're not seeing and have those one-on-one conversations. So yes, it's definitely a process that we have refined and we are now working to make sure that there is some fidelity across the board in how we look at our grading.
And just to add to that, at the beginning of the year, we know that our report cards are electronic. So a parent came in for open house. So if a parent came in for open house and for other meetings, we wanted to make sure that we had someone there in technology to help parents be able to download the app for Infinite Campus and to show them how they can get those grade alerts. I remember like, as a principal, just having parent meeting, and I would show my parents, you can have it right on your phone. For me, I had it set up where every time my child takes a grade in, I get a notification. And I think sometimes parents don't know that, so just making sure that we are communicating that and we're providing time to help them get it set up, and showing them ways how they can access those grades. Really for cards to make sure that our parents know how to access grades for their students.
You know something else that would probably help? You all may already do this. And ladies, I want to thank you all very much for presenting and sharing the information. For us to make the growth that we're looking to make here in Rockdale County, it takes all of us. So no one is dumping on anyone. We're saying as a collective team, what do we need to do? Right? So Infinite Campus is great, the technology is great. But you have, you have a lot of parents. Yes, I know how to use the technology. But I get home so late in the evening, I'm not going on Infinite Campus. Whereas if I had that hard copy in my hand, that would benefit me. So like, I would, one thing that I did was I identified those parents who maybe worked hard, didn't have a computer, didn't have access to a printer, and I sent those cards, those hard copies home. So I think that would be beneficial as, as we start to look at students from an individual standpoint, identify those students who need that hard copy, and make sure that those hard copies are going home. And, and like I said, that would help us with that parent piece. Because yes, I may know about technology, but I may just may not have the time. Or maybe a grandmother who's saying, you know what, I'm not putting that on my phone. You send me those alert, you send me that, that reminder, you send me a sheet telling me to look at the grades, send me the grades home. It'll be easier for me to just glance and say, you know what, your grade's not doing well. Than for me to have to go through that process. That doesn't work for everyone. And, and this is going to be the last thing. So we talked about teacher accountability, and let's talk about student accountability. I know that, and I'm going to ask you all, because I'm not sure, like I said, this is for us. We're gonna, we're gonna work together. Is this a policy procedure, or is this just a misconception that this is what's happening? So a student can miss their work, the student not turning in work. I know that's probably part of the reason why teachers are waiting to put grades in. Students are not completing assignments within that given frame. And then towards the end, they're given this list of assignments to make up, and then now all of a sudden, all these grades are going in. You sat in my class all year long, all semester long, you have not done anything, but now I gotta go back and grade all of these assignments. That's not fair to teachers. And that's really not an indication of what a child is learning, is showing us what they've gotten done. So I guess my question is, is that a policy procedure, or is this something that's happening, or is that not happening? Because I've heard it from several people, and if we're gonna close gaps, if we're gonna make achievements here, we're gonna have to look at every variable that impacts growth.
Right, there were some differences if you went from one school to the next as it relates to that. So we sat down, and that's the work that we did with the principals to be able to streamline those expectations at schools. And when you have that expectation, and then you're following up with pulling those reports, then you can have those conversations with not just teachers, but you can also have them with parents as well, to be able to say, this is where we are, and we need to get this, this work in. So I would say that at the elementary level, it is something that we have put into place and across the board for, starting for this school year.
Thank you.
And I would say at the middle school level, we do allow for them to, we do take missed work, we do take late work. We want to look at where the student is with mastery of content. Even though it is late, you're right, it's a challenge to teachers. But what happens is that now you're, something you graded two weeks ago, you're having to grade it now. But we do take, just being fully transparent, try to save it in the nine weeks, so that they're not have, because you don't want to open up the nine weeks. But it's about, I will say, I have children in the district as well. And I think it makes our children very comfortable knowing that they can turn in late, unless their parents are getting the ding, that say you haven't turned it in. And, and my children's teachers will, especially at the middle school level, the younger ones, I get a lot of emails, they need to turn their work in. Although she turns it, most of her work, okay. But I will say that, that our students have become kind of comfortable with that. And again, it is a lot of work for the teachers, but we're trying to make sure we're capturing the mastery of the student, and that we're not giving you a zero, because zero then comes compliance more than mastery of content, and you're not phased. So there's a fine line between that. We do, at the end of the grading period, the nine week, we try to keep it to, to allow them to make up that work, work with the teachers. But the teachers also can do makeup periods before then. But I do agree, it's a lot. Our teachers have a lot on their plate, and they're trying to meet students where they are. But I don't want a student failing a course, when really it's not their content knowledge, it's their compliance. So with that, we also expect teachers to, to reach out, to call the parents, let us know what's going on with those students. Look at grade reports, look at failure rates for teachers. Is it compliance, or is it content mastery? That's two different things. And when do, when calls do get to me, I pull up a grade book, just as assistant superintendent, like I did as an AP as a principal, and say, let's see why the grade is there. Is it because you're missing assignments, or is it because you're, or is it low performance? So that's a different type of intervention. But being transparent, we do allow for late, because I want the child to have the opportunity to demonstrate what they know, so we can do the interventions and things like that. But it is a lot of work on the teachers, and I do, I do agree.
And I, I will speak on high school. And so we do ask our teachers to allow students to make up work. But we also know that our students have a greater level of responsibility and accountability, because they're older. Now, that doesn't mean I didn't do my assignment, or I did really poorly on my assignment, because I didn't study. And so you have to give me an opportunity to make it up. In order to get the credit, teachers are free to say, you're required to come to the one-hour tutorial that I do once a week, and I'm going to work with you on this to make sure you have it, or you can't make up the work. Also, teachers do not have to use, they don't have to give you the test again if their next test is cumulative. That is, you get the same standards on the, the, maybe the, the big test at the end of the unit. You might count that unit test more than one time. And so we don't, I know that it causes a lot of angst and heartache as an old English teacher. I know that it took me forever to grade those essays, because it had to be just so right. But we try to make it so there are other opportunities to show mastery, because that's really what grading is about. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I just have a comment. I wasn't on board. My kids were, I have three boys. And we were in, I think, middle school when they came out with the, you can just make up work wherever, whenever. And attendance didn't count, and, you know, my kids definitely took advantage of that. They knew they could turn it in at the end. And it's so not fair to the teachers. But at the same time, I know you're focused on content mastery, getting the standard. But where are, where is the balance between having a child be responsible and knowing deadlines? Because I hear employers, and I myself have hired two of our AP students back in the day, who were the gifted bright ones, who couldn't fill out a timesheet, who wouldn't be responsible. And I want to know that our kids, we're teaching them everything. You know, how to be a good, successful, responsible adult. Because a lot of the content they're learning right now, the, you know, they probably aren't going to use later on. But they need to be able to show up on time. They need to be able to do a task and not think, I can be late, because it never mattered if I was late with my work in school. That's just my two cents.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Duncan, Dr. Rose, members of the board. I'll be going over the final financial reports for December, as well as the SPOS reports. The revenue for December, sixty-two point four million. The revenue year-to-date, so a hundred and twenty point nine million, which is sixty-six point eight percent of our budget. Prior period in December, we received fifty-four point seven million, a hundred and fourteen point six billion. Year-to-date was, which was sixty-six point nine percent of our budget. Expenditures for December, fifteen point seven million, ninety-one point eight million year-to-date, which is forty-nine point eight percent of our budget. Prior period, we see fourteen point four million for December, eighty-four point five million year-to-date, which was forty-nine point three percent of our budget. Our outstanding encumbrances are one, one million, nine hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Our fund balance at the end of December, sixty-seven point seven million approximately. Last December, we were at fifty, almost fifty-nine million. We have received the majority of our tax funds, so this is the highest fund balance you'll see from, for, for the rest of the year. So it'll start coming down now. Our assets, sixty-seven points, seven million. Our liabilities all cleared, and our fund balance is sixty-seven point seven million. SPOS five, SPOS five collections are ongoing and will be completed in March, twenty twenty-four. The collection rate is still real high, a hundred and twenty-two percent. The revenue received thus far is eighty-three point six billion, expenses are sixty-nine point two million, and the current balance in there is fourteen point four million. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I, I do not have any remarks for this evening. Thank you.
All right, the board has reviewed the minutes for all board meetings held in December. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for all board meetings held in December?
I move that we approve.
So moved, Heather.
Second, Akita.
All right, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, on the information items that are presented, I would respectfully request that we get a school nutrition report with a comparison to last year's, and also participation in the schools with our meal programs by school compared to last year. I think we'll need that to be able to budget.
Okay, thank you. There is no old business, but there is, there is no new business. However, we do have executive session this evening. Do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel?
Second, Akita.
All in favor? The motion carries.
Is that, was that the request?
And I am calling uh this session back. No more. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Derek Fort, currently the Director of Technology, to Chief Technology Officer effective July the first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, I got a motion from Duncan and a second from Mandy North. Uh is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Siobhan Beckett, currently the Principal at Sims Elementary School, to Principal of Peaks Chapel Elementary School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Second, Akita.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Patrice Graham, currently Principal of Shoal Creek Elementary School, to District Title Nine Coordinator effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We we have two opposition. Okay, five, four, and two against, okay. Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation to appoint?
Although you didn't ask for the opposed, but you did acknowledge your two.
I did.
Yeah. It's fine.
Okay. Okay. Recommendation to appoint Kim Veer, currently Principal of Pine Street Elementary School, to Principal of Lorraine Elementary School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Dr. Eldred Powell, currently Principal of Rockdale High School, to the Principal of Epic Center effective July the first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved. Second.
Any opposed? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Kia Richmond, currently the Assistant Principal of Honey Creek Elementary School, to Principal of Shoal Creek Elementary School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty-three?
That's Kia Nisha Richmond.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Unanimously pass. All in favor, motion pass. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Shawn Johnson, currently Assistant Principal of Flat shows Elementary School to Principal of Sims Elementary School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved. Beckett.
All in favor? Unanimously pass. Okay, let's see. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Dr. Renee Robinson, currently Assistant Principal at the Epic Center, to Administrator on Assignment Teaching and Learning, Mathematics Department, effective immediately and to conclude on June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Last week, the cabinet provided an extensive overview of all action items and the board voted to place the physical year twenty-four budget adoption calendar and January personnel recommendations on a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the action items under the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second. Did she get a second? I said a second.
She said second.
She just said second, but.
I said it. All but one. Oh, you said, okay. Motion is late. It's motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the action item under the discussion agenda? That we just discussed.
Regarding centers.
Yes.
I motion that we accept resignation center.
Okay. All in favor? Five to one. Motion carries.
As for opposed.
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Five to one. I mean, six to one. Motion carries. There is no board discussion, however. We do have an executive session to discuss um the superintendent's personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? All right.
All in agreement. Most of you care.
And my boy saying, oh, are we still on?